Take it a motion, Mr. President. The back of me after General Will's on May second. 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 Thank you. All favor. Close. Bill of eight nine zero. Now vote to the court of committees. Starting with resolution number two oh seven.
Resolution number two hundred and seven, two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the two thousand fourteen Department of Public Works budget.
I'm question. There ain't no discussion. I call for the vote. All favor. Close. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to two oh eight.
Resolution number two hundred eight of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the two thousand fourteen private department budget.
I'm a question. You know debate. I call for the vote. All favor. Close. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now have resolution number two oh nine.
Resolution number two hundred nine of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the two thousand fourteen planning department budget.
I'm a question. There ain't no discussion. I call for the vote. All favor. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. Number two ten.
Resolution number two hundred ten of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the implementation of funding in the first instance one hundred percent of the federal aid and state marketing program paid eligible costs of transportation federal aid project and cooperating funds therefore.
I'm a question. There ain't no debate. I call for the vote. All favor. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two eleven.
Resolution number two hundred eleven of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing and adapting bond ordinance in the amount of one hundred fifteen thousand dollars for additional financing to cover overages associated with works completed at Frog Valley Storm Sewer at Esposito's Cleaners and at the Broadway Sewer between Andrew and Foxhole Avenue.
I'm a question. All of session.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. Although these emergency repairs do run further than they may have anticipated, itself those complete very timely manner and safe. The city avoided many times up to repair and traffic disruptions. Specifically, in Washington Esposito's, but always sit in front of hospital saving similar situation. Or they will quickly handle it very nicely. So this is complimentary emergency repair for the purpose.
Anyone else on the question? Ain't no one else. I'm going to call for the vote. All favor. Close. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two twelve.
Resolution number two hundred twelve, two thousand fourteen. Bond ordinance dated December second, two thousand fourteen. Is an ordinance authorizing issuance of additional one hundred fifteen thousand dollar bonds of the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to pay part of the cost of emergency sanitary sewer and stormwater replacement projects in Encores City.
I'm a question. There ain't no discussion. I'll call for the vote. All favor. This your name is partner? Okay, long roll.
Okay. Starting with Alderman Brown. Alderman Dunn?
Yes.
Alderman Satch? Alderman Will?
Yes.
Alderman Dawson?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderman Ball?
Yes.
Alderman Mills?
Yes.
Alderman Chavat?
Long passes, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two thirteen.
Resolution number two hundred thirteen of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Freeman Peterson.
I'm a question. There ain't no discussion. I'll call for the vote. All favor. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two fourteen.
Resolution number two hundred fourteen of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the sale of one eighty-seven to one ninety-one North Street. Tax map number fifty-six dot twenty-eight dash three dash two and fifty-six dot twenty-eight dash three dash three and recommending a negative declaration of the private house.
I'm a question. There ain't no discussion. I'll call for the vote. All favor. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two fifty.
Resolution number two hundred fifteen of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, accepting the two thousand thirteen independent audit report prepared by Seedorf and Cuffin.
I'm a question. Alderman Nelson?
I just want to commend John Choey for working with the board of company. Previously, we had a board of company for many, many years and we have saved a significant amount of money by hiring this company. And in reviewing this audit report, it's a well-prepared report and represents our city well. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Ain't no one else. I'll call for the vote. All favor. Close. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution two sixteen.
Resolution number two hundred sixteen of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for adding pipe plant charges to the two thousand fifteen tax bill.
I'm a question. Ain't no debate. I'll call for the vote. All favor. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two seventeen.
Resolution number two hundred seventeen of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for adding delinquent public works charges to the two thousand fifteen tax bill.
I'm a question. There ain't no debate. I'll call for the vote. All favor. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two eighty.
Resolution number two hundred eighteen of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for adding building safety division charges to the two thousand fifteen tax bill.
I'm a question. Ain't no debate. I'll call for the vote. All favor. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two nineteen.
Resolution number two hundred nineteen of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for adding demolition charges to the two thousand fifteen tax bill.
I'm a question. Alderman Dawson?
Alderman Lawrence, thank you for the opportunity. I'd just like to say that the addition of demolition charges to the taxes, the benefit is showing there. Not the other, but the last month, we've seen tremendous increase in a way that people are caring about the neighborhood that I live in and the neighborhood that many of the travelers are in. And I'd just like to say, I appreciate the work that Mr. Green has done, that Dave Larson's done. And I also thank the council for holding on this in a fair way. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Ain't no one else. I'm going to call for the vote. All favor. Close. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two twenty-one.
Resolution number two twenty of two thousand fourteen. Ordinance of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, bringing in current and the warrant increasing fees for the city of Kingston.
I'm a question. Ain't no debate. I'll call for the vote. All favor. Close. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two twenty-one.
Resolution number two twenty-one of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the move of the base proportion ratio to fifty-two point eight four seven eight nine percent home stay and forty-seven point one five two one one percent non-home stay.
I'm a question. Alderman Nelson?
Mr. President, I'm glad to see that the council continues to shift the base proportion ratio. I think it's important. We really received the study earlier in the year that was funded by the Dyson Foundation and supported by a local, or sort of local community organization. I think that ultimately what we need is a planning place. And even though the mayor said that he's going to meet with, he's going to have a panel discussion. But in order to give homeowners and business owners guidance in terms of where we're going to go, where we're going to end up, instead of taking a ten percent shift each year, we need to have some sort of vision of where we need to be at the end of the day. I think it will certainly help our planning process and it will help, it will help local businesses plan as well. And they should acknowledge that that, that the report that was funded by the Dyson Foundation, that that, this study was done by Creo out of SUNY D. Holtz and with the assistance of community foundations of the Hudson Valley. So I think this is the right direction. We need to continue to move in this direction, but we need to know where we end up. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? All of them all.
Mr. President, while I certainly appreciate Alderman Dunn's work on this resolution, just like in the past, I would be in the role on this. I have been lucky to buy residence board states who proportionally, we have in order to set more retired homeowners than any other section of the city. We are taxing them out of their homes. And I feel that I come out in good faith. Well, yes, we are.
Anyone else on the question? Mr. President. All of the session.
Thank you. As I think has been pointed out quite a lot of speakers earlier, but I would like to reiterate for all those residents, the residential tax rate per thousand is actually going down this year, even though our spending is up due to, you know, the changes in the way that the city has been valued. We are able to actually take a step backwards. I think that, well, I agree with all of the boss's concerns for all the retired people, you know, the ability to both drop the tax rate and continue to move the shift to make business more friendly here in Kingston. I think this is actually the best vote for a plan.
Anyone else on the question?
Mr. President? Thank you. I just want to acknowledge Alderman Dunn, all of the section, all making, you know, really good points here. As a home stem and non-home stay homeowner taxpayer, I understand that this is a thorny issue. We've had thirty-three percent increase over the past five years in tax rates and a twenty-four percent increase in the non-home stay. So it's hard work and we have a tax cap to deal with. But I think what we need to do going forward is, is to get creative and figure out ways to enhance our tax base and how we fund all of our thirty-eight million dollars of city expenses. So I hope this next year that we can find a way that, you know, maybe brainstorm and look at all our options and decrease, again, the burden on those on fixed income, for instance, and Walgreen Ball Ward. So I think we have a lot of work to do, but I think we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Ain't no one else. I'm going to call for the vote. All favor. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, eight one. We now vote to resolution number two twenty-two.
Resolution number two twenty-two of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing and adopting the bond ordinance for the capital plan.
I'm a question.
Mr. President?
Alderman Mills?
I would like to say as the finance chairman, and working very diligently, long, hard hours with city officials, the department heads on this budget, that each and every department head that requested items within the capital plan budget are receiving at least a portion of what they requested. However, none have been denied. Also, I would like to thank the common council for considering and adopting my proposal to begin the endeavor of correcting the signalization at the intersection of East Chester Street and Flatbush Avenue. Two and a half years ago, Mike Shuff and I reached out to DOT. These are two high days that you would think the state would be responsible for. However, that's not true. It was pushed back to the city municipality. This intersection and the signalization is a responsibility of the city of Kingston. With a recent outage in the area, the lights were not working properly. On Friday, the Department of Public Works worked diligently to try and correct those lights. They flicker on and off. Sometimes they work and sometimes they don't. They live now with their lifespan. The need to correct this infrastructure is long overdue and is a concern of public safety that can no longer go unnoticed. I witnessed an accident on Saturday and thank God no one was injured. And I thank Mike Shuff and Rob Swenson for putting the effort forward on my eleven-hour request to help me get this passed through the budget this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? So, Alderman Dunn?
A question in the statement. Are we attaching the capital plan to the resolution? I don't see it here in my copy. Okay. I'm glad that we took the action that we did last night to amend the capital plan, to amend it, to address this emergency action that we needed to take. I'm also glad to see that the communications for this month, that we have a communication from the city engineer as a follow-up on asset management. Clearly, a long-term plan and inventory of our, of our, of the assets that we have and the infrastructure that we need to take care of and prepare is essential. But the presentation that, that, the presentation that we had earlier, either the, two months ago, the public safety and general government indicated that there would be potentially a twenty percent cost savings if we were to plan wisely on maintaining and taking care of our infrastructure. So I think hopefully we'll be able to move away from addressing emergency situations that we all know will cost more in both the short term and the long term, as we've seen with the Washington Avenue, St. Paul, to a more long-term planning basis where we're able to save money and plan wisely. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
Mr. President? While I appreciate Alderman Dunn's concerns on the infrastructure of the city, I must recognize department heads that have prepared capital plans over the last three to five years to each of their departments. As part of an infrastructure committee, those items were looked at and we laid, we were stagnant in implementing some of those. And part of that was the emergency situations that did occur, that we had to bond to make additional money to correct these areas within the city. Our infrastructure is crumbling beneath us before our eyes. And I do appreciate the presentation by asset management and I look forward to hearing more information at the next meeting in regard to that. But the need is here now to fix the infrastructure of the city of Kingston. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Ain't no one else. I'm going to call for the vote. All favor. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two twenty-three.
Resolution number two twenty-three of two thousand fourteen. Bond ordinance dated December second, two thousand fourteen. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of one million three hundred forty-four thousand dollar bonds from the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to pay part of the various items in Encores City.
Long roll, two thirds, hold required.
Alderman Dunn?
Yes.
Alderman Satch?
Hi.
Alderman Will?
Yes.
Alderman Dawson?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderman Ball?
Yes.
Alderman Mills?
Yes.
Alderman Chavat?
Yes.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two twenty-four.
Resolution number two twenty-four of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, to amend the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
I'm a question. Ain't no debate. I'll call for the vote. All favor. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two twenty-five.
Resolution number two twenty-five of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, to amend the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
I'm a question. All memos?
Thank you. Once again, as the finance chair, I diligently worked on this budget. I listened to the concerns of department heads. For example, at each of the budget meetings, there was a need, a desire, a dire need of department heads needing employees. We heard from a few of them tonight. Mike Shuff in DPW, Kevin Gilfeather in Recreation, Chief Tinty in the Police Department. On behalf of the people that are not here, Chief Graham in the Fire Department and Jackie Seagull in the Partnership Service. There's only so much that can go around. And I understand the need and I believe each of these budgets are to the air horn. I have to agree with what Mike Shuff said and what Chief Tinty said. We need to figure out a way throughout the year, not necessarily tonight, but throughout the year, that we can up the staff of these departments for the public safety, for the city that we live in, for plan. I do have to give a shout out to Kevin Gilfeather and Steve Noble. They were asked to leave that budget hearing meeting and go back and find a way to find more money to employ a full-time employee laborer in their department. Not only is it a laborer, DPW and the Rec Department are moving towards hiring CBL and laborers, but more in a CBL capacity, so they can better serve our city. They scrutinize their budget further and they have additional increases and decreases to aid in the rising of a much needed labor for that department. Originally, they came in with a five to six thousand dollar offer of increasing their budget. They left, they came back last night with a ten thousand decrease. They still needed more money to hire this full-time employee. They didn't stop there. They went out on a whim and they're wanting to use a sponsorship program that we have people sponsor throughout the year on the activities that take through the city. While I'm skeptical in implementing this at this time and to cover the portion of that salary, it's a great, great program and incentive that I believe can work. But I really would like to see the fruition before using it. However, I had suggested, let's exclude an offer made of twenty-five thousand dollars for an attorney that the city does not need, that that money could have been better spent toward this laborer or a laborer, a portion of it in another department. However, I will, yes, vote on this, but we need to look at our resources. We need to look at our department heads and our employees. We don't need to hire another counsel for twenty-five thousand dollars. The money would be better spent with our employees that can serve our community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Dawson? Now, if you want to speak to the twenty-five thousand, why don't you wait till we bring that up? Who cares?
Yes, I will. I want to thank Alderman Mills for her efforts on the budget. I think she puts in the work and does her homework and I thank her for that. I just wanted to say that every year ago for this, and I mentioned this, I think, at the last conference, we might have been the one before that, but I'd like to get us all together and focus more on the revenue end of this. I think we're always cutting here and then we do a good job of it, I think. But, you know, at some point, I think I mentioned last night, I'd like to see our, double our spending in the next three or four years and triple our revenue. That would be something I think. So obviously, we spend a lot of time on cutting and saving and maybe this year we can, we can look to try to be more creative, work with the mayor's office economic development and try to figure out whether to bring business to Kingston, such a great attractive area. I think sometimes we spin our wheels, but maybe we can, you know, focus on our thoughts in that direction. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Dunn?
Mr. President, I just want to commend Kevin Gilfeather and his staff on putting together this sponsorship package that he developed in a relatively short amount of time. I think that the finance committee and the council challenged him to go back and figure out a way to be able to fund this, this additional labor. He rose to that challenge, as Alderman Mills pointed out. He accepted that challenge and he came in confident that he was going to be able to raise the money to fund this necessary position in order to maintain and take care of our parks. We all know that our parks fall apart when they look bad. It's a bad reflection on us, the city, and on us as the legislative members of our, of our community. So I truly hope and I expect that he's going to raise the money and that he's going to accomplish what he's set out to do. And I just commend him. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ain't no one else. I'm going to call for the vote. All favor. Close. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two twenty-six.
Resolution number two twenty-six of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amend the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
I'm a question. Ain't no debate. I'll call for the vote. All favor. Close. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now vote to resolution number two twenty-seven.
Resolution number two twenty-seven of two thousand fourteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amend the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
I'm a question.
Mr. President?
Alderman Satch?
Thank you. I appreciate the enthusiastic discussion of this, both public and amongst key members. We have, we have looked at this and I believe there's been some misconceptions. This is exactly what we're trying to do, but I'm going to pass it over after a moment. I have had, just today, found some commentary in various social media and other places that I think is more egregious. And in fact, in some cases, I'd say it's outright lies. I don't know why you continue to assume that there's some connection with the water project, which is a bother to me because, you know, he started this, you know, personally, he wrote up, it has been done in January or February this year. But in fact, I looked at this exact same issue well over a decade ago. However, as opposed to everyone's expectation that I would be voting for this, I would like to tell you on registry and protest vote for the base and just mean politics that I see. I will actually hurt myself here. I'm going to vote no on this. I'm going to turn this down to sure that whoever is out there, there's groups, these people, whoever they might be, that no matter what small victory I might have thought they were going to win, I'll bring this to defeat and take it down, make sure that there is no victory and deal with these attacks all the time. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
Mr. President?
Mills?
I spoke long and hard on this two weeks ago and again last night. I had questions. I didn't get the answers to my questions. I can reiterate, I can read the charter again. I don't think I need to go there. But I really think it's unrealistic and foolish spending of our taxpayers' money to add a new budget line for the common council to seek outside links to the services to the tune of twenty-five thousand.
to add a new budget line for the common council to seek outside legal services to the tune of twenty-five thousand dollars. If additional legal services are required, we have a process in place. Follow that process, submit a communication to the appropriate committee, and at that time, cast your vote for additional legal representation, if it's deemed necessary. However, I have not come upon a situation that the corporation council and assistant that we currently have in the city of Kingston has not answered, bothered the common council in a correct manner. Last night it was stated that no one could recall, not once, that a dispute occurred between the branches of government that resulted in higher legal services. The city charter was adopted in eighteen ninety-six, the charters had corrected twice within that, once in nineteen ninety-three by Mayor Emerella, and once in nineteen ninety-four by Mayor T.R. Gaddel. If we need to have a charter revision, we need that referendum that needs to go on the ballot in November. That answer, I haven't received a complete definitive answer. We should continue to, continue to pursue that. I want to, want to state that I was elected to represent the city, and I have, and I will continue to do so. I find it disturbing that I ask many questions regarding the proposed legislation, and most, if not all, when no answer. If I don't know something, I need an answer to make a conscientious decision, because my vote is for the city of Kingston, for the taxpayers of this city. I asked, for example, how this legal service could have assisted us in the past. I received no answers. I am not pointing fingers, but I am going to quote something that was written in an article today in The Freeman. It was stated that it's important from time to time for the council to get its own separate advice. We have had a host of issues that have come up during the Gaddel administration, that we have included to receive advice from an attorney that did not have to answer to the mayor. I ask again what those issues are. It's apparent that the legal services are directly related to issues of the past or that are currently going on. I am not against anything with the city or the endeavor of things that are happening and occurring now. However, did anyone ever ask my opinion? No, they did not. It would rather be assumed that asking questions to spend or a lot of safety net of twenty-five thousand dollars in taxpayer money should be spent rather than inquiring on behalf of the taxpayers. I didn't know, I asked, and I still don't have answers. Your assumption of my intentions are being correct. If I don't understand, once again, if I have any answers and I can make a conscious decision, my vote will be no. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Alderman Paul.
Every year, department heads are asked to do more than less. We have seen here tonight that there has been a loose officer coming to the budget. We had last night, uh, Kevin Gilfeather talk to us, and I picked great money for himself to pay for a new employee. Tonight, Mr. Will Alderman Wall stood up and said that we need creative ways to save money for our taxpayers. I do not believe that putting twenty-five thousand dollars in the mind that no, does not exist at this point for just in case the situation is by any means saving money for taxpayers. Alderman Carey mentioned that we need to double our spending to make the city better. We can't double our spending if we put twenty-five thousand dollars aside for something that we don't know is going to happen. The charter clearly states that corporation council serves the mayor, the council, and the residents of the city. If we are here tonight to make a change to that charter, then it needs to be voted on in November by all residents of the city. Why in the world would we put twenty-five thousand dollars aside now for a vote that's going to happen in November? I don't believe that this is the process that we should be taking at this point. And, like Alderman Mills, there are questions that have not been answered. Why twenty-five thousand dollars? Last night, we argued over moving three thousand of the twenty-five thousand dollars to cover some events, and the argument contained. Why twenty-five thousand dollars? That is not an answer. I just, I, I feel that this is absolutely not in the best interest of the taxpayers, Alderman Mills.
Anyone else? Alderman Dawson.
Thank you, Alderman Paul, again, um, just to piggyback on Alderman Mills and Alderman Paul, Paul has just mentioned. Twenty-five thousand dollars, is that the issue? Is, is, is our spending the issue? What's the real issue here? That's what I'd like to know, I think that was asked in many ways last night. I will say tonight, I'm proud of how we're handling ourselves, because last night was a living crazy. Me included, because I didn't understand, are we representing the city here? Were we representing personal issues? What, what were we dealing with last night? Um, we have, we have the public here tonight, they spoke, um, maybe it wasn't representation of everybody in the city of Kingston, but I'd like to think that we, as council members, are representing the city of Kingston and not personal issues. Um, I haven't had a problem, I don't see a problem in our current representation, um, as, as far as the attorney for the city of Kingston. And I'm trying to follow the charter, I'm trying to understand the laws and how, and how we're supposed to represent the people, our constituents, and I don't know really if that's what was going on. I feel like there's some other things, I'm very proud of how we're handling ourselves tonight. Thank you very much, and I'll definitely be in the oven.
Mr. President?
I'm a Q. Alderman Brown.
I just want to read this small little paragraph in the charter, in case people have a little trouble understanding. Section C ten point one, one B. The corporation council should be the primary legal advisor of the mayor, common council, and all commissions, departments, and other offices of the city. The corporation council shall conduct, supervise, or monitor, as required, the prosecution and defense of all actions or proceedings brought by or against the city or by or against any of its officers in their official capacity, and appeal from all other orders, decisions, and judgments as he or she seems advisable. Based on this law, if you really want to think deep about it, would that open this up to department heads getting their own attorney because they didn't like the decision that the common council made on their budgets? How about, um, can they carry their own attorneys and work it into their budgets? As an elected official, we are, we are government of laws and rules, and as an elected official, I took a note through a by with those laws. I feel on some level that the legal service lines is trying to be pushed through, is a way to try and circumnavigate the charter as it stands. Some people try to deny that this is about a water issue, some try to deny that this is a way to throw, toward, toward the current administration. And then, there is a charter in what it says.
Alderman Dawson. Second time, you get two times.
Um, just, I, I, I need to know, um, in the past, I'm, I'm researching how things have been done, not just this council, council in the past. Is it, am I correct in understanding that there, um, that we are able to confirm a NICO for any issues or concerns that we might have legally, as well as the current administration? That's correct, right? So there's another legal opinion already that we can reach back to. Um, again, I just want to reiterate, um, I respect the differences of opinion, because I definitely have this big mind. I respect that, but at the cost of twenty-five thousand, again, um, thank you.
Anyone else on the question? All in the dozen.
I think the question here is, if the need arises, should the common council have the funding in place to hire outside counsel if necessary? If the answer to that question is yes, then we should be a yes vote on this resolution. The common council and the executive branch are two distinct, two distinct branches. And obviously, there's a tension there between those two branches. And our system was set up, it's one of the fundamental principles of our country, our system was set up so that we would have checks and balances between the executive and the legislative branches, in addition to the judiciary. And as a result of the tension between, and as a result of the two branches, there's a tension between our branches. And, and as there should be, as we discuss ideas, we debate ideas, we debate what to do, there are, there's really a natural tension between the executive branch and the legislative branch. And that's what makes us stronger as a community, and as a country, and, and, and as a city. And from time to time, there may be a conflict between the executive branch and, and the legislative branch. That conflict can play out in corporation council's office, and this isn't any reflection of the person or the people in that office. This is about basic fundamental tension between the executive branch and the legislative branch, and the role that corporation council plays. Corporation council, as we all know, serves to the pleasure of the mayor. Corporation council can be fired by the mayor, corporation council can be hired by the mayor. Yet, corporation council gives advice to the mayor, the different departments, the different commission, and to the common council. However, we have no power to terminate the relationship with corporation council and his representation, or her representation, when that occurs to the city and to us. As a result of that control by the executive, by the mayor in this case, corporation council's interests are aligned with the mayor. Corporation council's interest is to give advice to the common council consistent with the mayor's policies and practices. To do otherwise, to take a contrary position, would be to potentially jeopardize corporation council's job employment with the mayor. However, by funding a line, we take the proactive step to make sure that we have the funding in place in case we need to seek outside counsel and, and as a secondary opinion. And now, that may not occur very frequently, and may not occur a whole lot, and that's okay, but at least we have the capability to do that if we need to. And this is about what we need to do to protect the council's interest as a separate body, as a separate, as distinct from the executive branch. As far as those arguments go about the charter change, or about a change that would be necessary, the charters, the charter states, the corporation council shall be the primary legal advisor to the common council and to the mayor. The primary legal advisor, no one is suggesting that we replace corporation council, no one's suggesting that corporation council not be the primary legal advisor. This is simply about funding a line. And we're not changing the job duties if we revoke this and support this resolution. Those who believe that a charter change is necessary, believe that our legislative body gave up its right to seek secondary advice from outside counsel. That just doesn't happen in our charter, it's nowhere in there, if it's in there, point it out, I challenge you to point it out, it doesn't exist. There's nothing there that limits our ability to seek outside advice when we need to. Indeed, we've gone and approved outside advice, when we saw a, a recommendation on potentially suing New York City on the sinkhole, and we threw fifteen, twenty thousand dollars in that. So, all we're doing is simply funding a line to protect our interests, and, and, and that is what's essential. And there may be times, because corporation council may be biased in favor of the mayor and, and promoting the mayor's policies, that we need a non-biased decision that protects the council's interest and protects our interest as a legislative body, not the mayor's interest. And now briefly address some of the arguments that other people made. We talked about twenty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand dollars, frankly, in a thirty-eight million dollar budget is chump change. We just approved a resolution bonding for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for infrastructure improvements. We, we regularly have approved additional bonding for the sinkhole. We've seen engineering costs go up, and we regularly approve those. So, twenty-five thousand dollars in the grand scheme of things is not a whole lot of money, it's minuscule. I think we do need to figure out ways to, to raise more revenue and, and to raise more money, but this, this line item is not going to significantly change the budget in any way, shape, or form. A no vote on this is a vote against the common council independence. It's a vote against us seeking non-biased advice if we need it, when necessary. This isn't about Niagara, this isn't about personalities, this isn't about any specific issue, it's simply about protecting our interests. So, I encourage everyone to vote yes in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
With all due respect to Alderman Dunn, I think we should maybe ask some of the department heads who are here tonight if they would like to have that chump change.
Anyone else on the question? Alderman Chad.
Mr. President, council members, I appreciate everybody's input in this. Um, same every month, we come here, we sit here, we make decisions the way we feel appropriate. I mean, I like to think I'm, I'm making decisions for my constituents through the city. Um, I don't want it to come down to, you know, somebody thinks a no vote, or a yes vote, me, you're against this, or you're against that, you're voting your conscience here. I do, everybody is well spoken here, the only thing I'll take exception of, twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money. Um, I've said that before, if we want to hire a consultant, twenty-five thousand dollars is still twenty-five thousand dollars. To me, it's a lot of money, and if we were, if I thought for a second we'd be using that twenty-five thousand, I probably wouldn't be voting for this. My feeling is we're probably not going to use any of it during the course of the year. I mean, I'm pretty happy with our procedure that, that we've talked these things out. I'm happy with, with Ann's decisions, we really haven't had many disagreements. That being said, I think we're all here to vote our conscience, you know. It got a little out of hand last night at, at the meeting, and, uh, you know, sometimes that's really not a bad thing, you know, for a fight to disagree once in a while. Keeps things interesting, keeps you thinking, um, this is one of those occasions. I haven't had many since I've been on the council, you know, where we've, we've been that odd for something like this. Hopefully, when the votes are cast, nobody's going to say, I can say that was the wrong thing, or accept your opinion. That's what this comes down to, it's an opinion. And I think this just gives us another resource to use, whether we use it or not remains to be seen. My feeling is, we're probably not going to use it.
Anyone else on the question?
Mr. President?
Alderman Brown.
I take offense at chump change, that really is, um, that's not a very nice word, especially when somebody's looking how fair, how they're going to pay their taxes, how they're going to pay their water and sewer bill. So to say it was chump change, ain't the wrong choice of words. And we need to remember, we represent the residents, we're not representing the council for their idiocy, we're representing the constituents. They're the ones that voted this, and I think maybe if you ask them, would you like to spend twenty-five thousand dollars for another lawyer, or something that's going to help the council? I, I'd be interested to hear what the constituents have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else before I call for the vote? Alderman Sash.
Thank you, and then again, I commend all of the members of the council, I think, uh, it's been interesting and spirited debate. Mr. Dunn, I think, definitely stated the case, or I've seen multiple people speaking against it. Um, in this case, as I said earlier, I think we can no vote, uh, different reasons altogether. I think that some of the things I've seen, uh, at this point, maybe think that there's a challenge to the council as a whole questioning our integrity or sincerity of working for the city. And I think that, well, as I said, denying anybody at all to those who would make such suggestions is my only intent tonight. I certainly would like to prove this back, we'll have more time to debate it, we can look into it more. Defeat tonight does not mean the end of the idea, certainly I'm holding on to a moat, I don't know that. Uh, but I would like some solidarity from the council, I realize, uh, people will be voting their conscience, and I certainly agree with them, but, uh, I realize people will be voting their conscience, and I certainly agree with them, but as a reduke to the type of politics that I think I've seen, I would appreciate no votes, simply to stand in solidarity with each other. Thank you.
Anyone else on a question? Alderman Dawson.
Mr. President, I just want to reiterate, $25,000 out of $38 million is a nominal amount of money. It's relatively insignificant, especially when it's coming out of the sales tax line. We realized an additional $200,000 in sales tax this year, and we were expecting to realize an additional amount. And while there's, while we use, we are very sparse in our budget, in comparison, the budget is in the $25,000 line, it's likely to go back into the budget, because it's unlikely that we continue to use it. We very well could. So there is, there is a relatively insignificant impact on this budget at all. And the last thing that I'll point out, in the late 80s, early 90s, the Democrats on the common counsel had their own attorney. There was certainly an attorney for the city, but at that time, there was an attorney specifically for the Democrats. So, be that in May, I encourage everyone to support it. It's an important fundamental principle that we receive non-biased and illegal advice from time to time.
Anyone else? Mr. President, Alderman Well.
I just want to give everybody the heads up that next month, I'm going to be voting against the proposed $100,000 CT male engineering study for LED street lamps. It is a complete waste of money. That is real money. $25,000 is real money, too. I recall back in March, Alderman Brown stating that we need to get moving on this streetlight thing. And I changed my vote from the finance committee to the common counsel chamber from a no to a yes.
Alderman Well, he can do that, if you want. We're really discussing, we have a legal consultant, so it kind of, well, I'm not so...
I'll just, I'll go away with it then. So, I regretted a couple of the Alderman have changed their minds late game here, but I respect that we're all entitled to do that. So I just have a brief, written statement on three. It just looks at the charter and the whole question about what we need to revisit the charter. Nowhere does the charter forbid the common counsel to hire a legal consultant, and there is no language suggesting that what is proposed requires us visiting the charter. Visiting the charter. For that matter, nowhere does the charter require that the board of water commissioners appoint to retain a legal counsel, yet it does. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe the current attorney has been retaining the legal advice by that board for a quarter century. New York state law is not rich when it comes to legislative bodies contracting, did make counsel. A 1975 court case from Utica ruled entirely that the city charter does not mandate that, quote, "only the Corporation Counsel act as an advisor to the common counsel," unquote. Similarly, the Kingston city charter states that, quote, "The Corporation Counsel shall be the primary legal advisor to the mayor, common counsel, and departments, and commissions," but it does not stipulate his office is the sole source of legal advice. Funding for outside legal contractors has been approved and retained by this body on behalf of the city court counsel for cases such as Chris Ray and the sinkhole, albeit the latter without. This all goes as happened. Having this resource is the right action for us to make, and will serve the common counsel and the people of Kingston well. We may not have the need to utilize it, but it makes sense to know that it is available in case the need arises. I urge my fellow council members to support this resolution. Thank you.
Anyone else, before I call for the vote? There ain't no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
If you oppose, please raise your hands again. One, two. Okay, the resolution is defeated. Five, four. We now go to resolution number 228, or we need some, oh, we have the number, hold up. Just a little adjustment there.
So the new total of the charter number is going to be $38,887,987.
If you can put your...
Resolution number 228, 2014, resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York, to approve the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year 2015 as a deadline.
On a question? Alderman else?
At this time, I would like to mention and thank the common counsel for their efforts in the last few weeks of meeting and scrutinizing this budget. First, I would like to thank the mayor and the department heads for putting this budget together. There were many, many meetings to get to this point. Just a small amount that I did find, and I'm just going to, I scrutinized and scrutinized this budget. That's what I'm here to do. And 220, resolution 225, showed you my $470 that I found. Like I said, it's a small amount, but any amount that can help our budget, I appreciate. And again, thank you to the common counsel. Thank you for meeting and working through this budget.
Anyone else? Alderman Dawson.
Yes, thank you, Alderman Millers. I'd just like to say, Alderman Mills did a phenomenal job as finance chair. Unbelievable. Diligent, diligent, diligent. My actor's off. Thank you.
Alderman Jackson.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Alderman Mills. This is my first time here, and she offered a lot of guidance, and she was well prepared with everything. I really like the way she deflects credit from herself to everybody else that's been in, you know, she has done a phenomenal amount of work, a phenomenal job. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Alderman Brown.
And I too, want to thank Mary Ann Mills, the chairman. I know what she went through. A lot of things got bounced, and bounced back and forth between us. And she's hardworking, dedicated, and she gets the figures. She finds $470 a day. You know, that's somebody who's really pulling the budget to look for something. So, she did a good job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Dawson.
Congratulations, Alderman Mills, for navigating your first question season and intervening at the end of the house. So, good job. I want to say that this budget does concern me. We have taken, in order to keep taxes down, we took significant money out of the fund balance, more than $600,000. And while taxpayers, the residents, will see their taxes go down, there's, we need to be able to plan for the future. We know that the fund balance is going down, it's going to be around 5%, 5.5%. Our policy is to have it at 10%. We cannot continue on this map. We cannot continue to take $600-plus thousand of the budget every year. It would have been worse, it would have been greater, but for the election cost and the safety net, safety net recovery. We know that we don't have a plan right now to replenish our fund balance. We need to develop that plan. This is an opportunity for us, as the council, to be able to develop that plan, and to be able to figure out how we can raise additional revenue. And as Alderman Carrion has aptly pointed out, not the first time, but several times now, that if we can increase our revenue, it will make our city that much better, and we will be able to spend more on additional projects, and to hire the employees that we need to hire, provide the services that we need to provide to the city. So, we need to be creative. If we fail to address, if we fail to address the money that we have taken out, and if we fail to plan more actively in the future, there could be a potential consequence to the taxpayers in the future. We know that next year, we've already spent approximately 1% of the tax cap of 2%, 1% to 2% that were allotted for the tax cap in, as well. So, let's look forward to the future, let's look for these opportunities, let's look to raise additional revenues, let's look for more ways to save money, and to create a proper process. Thank you.
Anyone else? There ain't no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 229.
Resolution number 229, 2014, resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York, creating a tax levy to provide the amount needed for city purposes for the fiscal year 2015.
On a question? There ain't no debate, I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 230.
Resolution number 230, 2014, resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York, to approve the city's sewer budget for the fiscal year 2015.
On a question? There ain't no discussion, I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 231.
Resolution number 231, 2014, resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York, establishing sewer charge rate for the year 2015.
On a question? There ain't no debate, I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 230. I'm sorry, I had to wait all evening to let this off, but last but not by far, now this, this resolution number 32.
Resolution number 232, 2014, resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Junior League of Kingston, New York.
On a question? Alderman Dawson.
Mr. President, I should recommend Junior League on the excellent job that they're doing over at Forsyth Park in the neighborhood. I look forward to the new playground there. It's going to be spectacular. They've worked hard, they're a huge asset to our community, and we thank you. Keep up the good work, keep raising that money.
Anyone else on a question? Mr. President? Alderman Sash.
Thank you. Obviously, we all agree, you all gave us first support, as I said, we appreciate everyone's efforts to raise money. But I would like to point out that the Junior League has been doing this for quite some time. I think they might have built the first pavilion, I don't know, apparently. But this is certainly sort of a creative partnership that people have been speaking about, to try to find more of that, just like, thank you.
Anyone else on a question?
Mr. President?
Alderman Brown.
I also am glad that this is moving forward. I just had my grandchildren there last year, and they wanted to know why there were so many wood sticks on the wood, and they couldn't slide down. So I am really looking forward to this going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else on a question? There ain't no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. Congratulations, good luck. That takes care of our resolution number, seeing before the committee. Why, yes, we're voting for them.
Mr. President?
Alderman.
I would like to propose the meeting tonight on behalf of a very special person in my life, that would be my mom. She passed away 19 years ago today. She was a city employee, she worked at the city for a great woman, and I am honored to call for my mom and have her in our memory today. Thank you.
Anyone else? There ain't no one else, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn. Motion? Somebody?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We hereby stand adjourned to the next regular scheduled meeting. Thank you very much.